All right, we have trustee Kanata present, trustee Akubi, the presiding judge and myself. So it looks like we have a quorum present, so we'll go ahead and proceed and call the Board of Trustees regularly scheduled meeting for Tuesday, January 24th to order. And will the secretary please call role?
Chief Justice Robert J. Torres.
Present.
Presiding Judge Alberto C. Lamarena.
I'm present.
Trustee Cynthia D. Akubi.
I'm also present.
Trustee Donna Munya Kanata.
I'm present at my office in East Agania.
Guam Bar President Jackie T. Terlaki.
All right, notice of the meeting was provided, both the five day notice and the forty eight day notice with publication in the Pacific Daily News. And we do have a quorum present, the first order of business will be the approval of the meetings of the regularly scheduled meeting of December twenty seventh, and before we I entertain a motion on the approval of the minutes, of course, I was not the chairperson at that meeting, this is my first meeting back as the chairperson in six years, and I'm privileged to be here and be able to serve as your chairperson for the PDSC Board. I did notice there were a couple of things on the prior meeting minutes in reading them, and I went over that I guess we can go over when I get to the report from the Executive Director, from the APD Managing Attorney and from the EJC Managing Attorney. But I would note that on page I think, I believe it was seven, when discussing the pay parity, there was a correction that probably needed to be made, but I'll, I just alert the board members who were present of that, and then they can look at the minutes and make the motion accordingly. And I will abstain from voting since I was not at the, at the last meeting on approval of those minutes. So with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of December twenty seventh, twenty twenty two.
Motioned. To approve.
I will, I will second the motion, Your Honor.
All right, there's been a motion. And it has been seconded by, motion by trustee Kanata, seconded by trustee Akubi. Would you just take a look at the, let me just find you the page, I think it was page, I believe it was page seven. Give me, yes, page seven in discussing. Give me a second. I just want to make sure, no, this was the older meeting minutes that I have, let me just pull out the most recent one. On discussing the pay parity on page seven of seventeen. If you look at what is page three of four of the minutes and page seven of seventeen of the packet. The last sentence is incomplete, I believe that was just a Scribner's error. If you can, or Chief Justice Comment at PD get an early start on this so that and then it dangles, so. If you could maybe modify the motion subject to that correction.
Modify the motion subject to correction.
All right, it's been modified by trustee Kanata, seconded by trustee Akubi, all those in favor of approving the minutes subject to the correction noted, say aye?
Aye.
All right, there being no objection, those meeting minutes are approved. The next item under old business is the financial status update. And so who will be giving the update on that? Mike?
Yes, yes, sir.
Good to see you again, Mike, even if it's virtually.
Likewise, sir. Okay, going on with the report. We have received our second January allotment release on January nineteenth. And PDSC is at ninety two percent, while APD is operating at ninety two percent. Additionally, the, we do have a grant, the JAG Access to Council Grant. The grant expenditures as of December twenty twenty two is sixteen thousand seven hundred fifty two. Leaving the encumbered and unextended balance as of today at nine thousand nine hundred five. An invoice for the reimbursement of three thousand dollars for the first quarter of fiscal year twenty twenty three has been submitted. Going on to the tax funding. The, I, we do have the ICJR funding, which is available from the ICJR grant as of December thirty first is at one hundred and sixteen thousand and will be used for reimbursements for the advanced payments made on behalf of tax after exhausting the funding from stop twenty twenty of three thousand three hundred. Which is scheduled to expire in June of twenty twenty two. For the EJC, for fiscal year twenty twenty three, we have received reimbursements for October and November twenty twenty two this month. We anticipate receiving December's reimbursement within the next disbursement cycle of the Department of Administration. And as an update, we have received our copy of the MOU, signed by all parties concerned. And that is all for the recording of the financials. If there are any questions, I'm available to answer. Thank you.
Is there any questions for Mr. Moreno? All right, there being none, we'll now move on to item B under old business, a report from the PDSC Executive Director.
Thank you, good afternoon, Chief Justice, and welcome aboard again.
Is there any questions for Mr. Moreno?
Was it, because there's a lag on the any, anyway, so as far as our office, so we do have a couple of vacancies that we're still actively trying to fill, unfortunately, one of our attorneys is going to be relocating to Maine. His last day will be February tenth, so that will be a third vacancy. And so, you know, we're right now currently reviewing applicants. So we hope to eventually be fully staffed in the next month or two. The other things that we're working on, I know you, hopefully you've had a chance to review some of our prior minutes, right? So the six anniversary of Gideon is this year, the Gideon versus Winright case. We've entered into MOU with the Sixth Amendment Center. I'm not sure if the board members have had a chance to look at the website. David Carroll is pretty much a leading expert on the Sixth Amendment issues, and he goes around the country. I guess he gets grants to do assessments over criminal defense systems nationwide, he hasn't been able to do Guam yet, so he's excited to come out here. He'll be meeting with us as well as the court to see how we can improve the administration of public defense for the indigent residents of Guam. And so that MOU was signed in early January. It's back with the Sixth Amendment Center, and they're going to develop a schedule. We're hoping that they'll come in person at least once. And hopefully twice, but they'll come at least once, and they're planning on observing remotely through Zoom and maybe the telephonic hearings that we've been conducting. So that's one project we're working on. We've also we're also going to be working on reassessing the the indigent income guidelines, right, we haven't really touched those since twenty fourteen. You know, inflation's gone up, so the cost of living has gone up. But we haven't really changed the income guidelines. And so we're starting to see people that you know, really should probably, they'll be unable to hire a private counsel because they're very close to our income guidelines. And they really need to be addressed sometime this year, so we're, we're really looking at it, it's a lot more comprehensive than we had thought. In the last time, they, I think they just took the poverty guidelines and then just I don't know, added up. You know, like a hundred seventy five percent of the, the guidelines, however, that's really not a best practice, so I mean, it ended up, I'm really going through hundreds of pages of research on what does it mean to be indigent, right, because that was unresolved question by Gideon, right? They just said indigent, everyone's entitled an attorney, but they didn't define indigent, right? So, you know, like in the Fed system, people were getting appointed a federal defender really without looking at their, their income guidelines, because they understand, like, if you're confined, right, it's hard to hire an attorney from jail, so we're looking at a bunch of those things, there's been some recent rulings too where parents' income isn't considered for like, as a household member for certain adult children in the, in their house, so. And then those kind of rules sometimes prevent us from, you know, representing people who would otherwise qualify, if we look at if they're an adult child living with their parents. When you include the parents' income, and they don't have a duty to support, they should really qualify for our services. So that's another thing that we're working on. We're also finalizing all of our juvenile and adult performance standards. We're eventually going to hope to convert those into a handbook because of a manual for criminal defense representation, because it appears that the panel now is down to maybe one or two members, so we think that if we put together a manual that's accessible to the you know, private bar members, you know, like, simple motions, like motions to suppress, all these different motions for release. If we make that available to attorneys who haven't been doing criminal defense in a while, it'll, it'll really help the system. So those are some of the projects that we're, we're currently working on.
Thank you for that report, Executive Director Hattori, let me ask you about the memorandum of agreement between the Public Defender Service Corporation and the Sixth Amendment Center, and also let the record reflect that trustee Terlaki, President of the Guam Bar is also present. I know they set a timeframe, the duration of the agreement is from January one through October thirty first, twenty twenty three. Did they indicate to you when they might give you a schedule of activities that they would be undertaking? I know they, the memorandum had a you know, unfilled timeline with, you know, the background research, the data analysis, the interviews. But they had not, you know, at least at the preliminary, the one I saw, unless it's shaded out, it's not quite done, they kind of gave that as an idea, it looks like it may be shaded, it just doesn't show in the black and white. So obviously, you know, they may have done some background research, but they wanted to do some data analysis. I guess in February and March, including interviews and court observations, right? Is that, was that shaded?
Yeah, that part hasn't been finalized, so, but that's what their target is.
All right, so I guess as soon as we get that schedule, we'll be and get a better handle on, on, you know, what you know, what they'll need, I presume they'll want to obviously interview some of the trustees. I, you know, as well as the judicial officers. And, and in addition to observing, you know, the, the court proceedings, so the sooner, you know, we get that and then get that information out to our judges, we can make sure that you know, we get them available and to cooperate, you know, with the assessment, because I do think it's a, it's a a good idea, we might not you know, in examining their prior assessments, obviously, they, they do, I think, a very thorough job. We may not like everything that they say in the assessment, but I think it, it would be a good opportunity for us to improve upon those services, and and you pointed out, you know, the issues we're having currently with indigent defense, I mean, we have the public defender, we have the APD, we're down to one attorney on our criminal felony panel and two attorneys on our juvenile, so. And in fact, the one attorney who is still remains on the panel is on a, on a leave of absence, so the court has been forced to kind of go back to maybe some of the youngsters here don't recall, but the old follow the list appointment of attorneys in cases currently, which is obviously not the most ideal situation. But it's unfortunately what we're faced with until we address some of the issues that need to be addressed on in this manner. Any questions for Executive Director Hattori or comments? Steve, one thing that wasn't in your report this, this time, and I know we talked to me was the SOPs on the conflicts. I know that in the last meeting, that was brought up, and there was some discussion about modifications that were going to be made for the, those SOPs. I don't know if they, they had been done, I know Kathy sent me the SOP, the minutes from the last meeting where the SOPs were discussed, but when I was reading the minutes, it looked like there were some suggested changes, so I don't, I don't know if the that was simply an oversight or if those changes have been completed.
No, so we could put those in final form for the next board.
Okay, all right, that's fine, I just.
We didn't really want to overwhelm you, I think you guys will have to take a closer look into it, and hopefully we'll be able to do that by the next board meeting.
All right, okay. Any questions then for Steve? All right, the, the next item on the agenda is a report from the APD Managing Attorney.
Good morning, good afternoon, Your Honor, welcome to your, welcome back to your old spot. Anyway, um, for my office, we weren't sure what what you as the chief wanted us to continue or not continue to do regarding reports that you want, so as you know, Mrs. Hattori and Mr. Hattori had a recent death in the family, and we haven't been able to prepare our stats, but we will get them for the next board meeting if that is what the preference is for the board. Under.
I think it would be, I think it would be meaningful for us to get some stats, at least, you know, I mean, it, it appeared to me that they were looking for stats based on my reading of the last minute, maybe for the, for the year, or what would have been close to the year. I think it would still be meaningful and good for us to examine those, and maybe help, help us determine resource allocation priority needs, you know, as a board, so I think it would be good to to bring that up, you know, and bring it up to the next meeting if you can.
That would be, that's fine, Your Honor, I just wanted to just alert the board that we will have it for the next board meeting. We do, as Mr. Hattori had just mentioned, two of the lawyers who are married are both leaving shortly, so we have another vacancy in our office, so we'll be sending out more of the requests for another attorney, as you know, there, it's very hard these days to find attorneys, but we're working on it. And we'll have the stats for you at the next board meeting, thank you.
What, the last meeting, you said you didn't have problems filling your vacancies?
Well, it's, it's, it's weird, in the last month, it's been very hard.
You know, the one, I, I know that Justice Carvalho had mentioned trying to get the advertisements or the, the job announcements out to the Micronesian Islands, to the Pacific Judicial Council. So I think that's a good idea, there's attorneys who are leaving, you know, their positions or their contracts are expiring within those jurisdictions, and so there, there might open it up to another pool of, of applicants, particularly if if there have been some changes in the, in the market. And you're not being able to fill those positions as quickly as you would prefer.
That's, yes, I agree, who do we contact for that, are you the head of PJC?
No, no, the presiding judge is the treasurer of the Pacific Judicial Council, but the president is Judge Francis Tarinco-Gatewood. And so I, I think, you know, the probably it would be just disseminating the information through the membership of the PJC, so providing those job announcements through either you know, the, the different courts that are members of, of the PJC, and I think Trina Ula, I, I don't know if you know Trina.
I'll ask her.
Yeah, she might have the listing of the, of the PJC memberships or the clerks of court in their respective jurisdictions, and, you know, you could just ask them if they disseminate it to attorneys and see if they're.
I'll email Ms. Trina, thank you, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. So anything else, any questions for the managing attorney? All right, I'm going to hear now from the Elderly Justice Center Managing Attorney.
Good afternoon, Your Honor, I'm Alicia Malino, I'm an attorney at what we're calling the Civil Law Center now, so I'll just be giving the report.
Okay.
Our managing attorney, Mr. Haynes, had to be off island for family emergencies and business. So the, the number of cases we've done is, it's in the packet. Page fifteen, it's pretty self-explanatory. It shows that for October, we opened sixty nine cases. For November, we opened thirty two cases. And December, we opened twenty five. Because the month was a little slower because of the holidays and some of the staff out of the office. And then the second table shows the number of outreaches we've done per month for October, November and December. The third table says cases received, but it's properly, probably should more properly be titled, requests received, so those are the kinds of cases outside of the the types of cases that we're currently taking under the instruction of the board, so these are the, these are just the types of requests that have been made outside of the allowed types of cases. They're, you know, they're broken up and divided, and also there's also several other types of requests that are listed there. And then the last table shows the amount of referrals that we make and to which different agencies they are. Does anybody have any questions about those tables?
Can I just ask a couple of questions, number one is where were the guidelines that were adopted by the board, Kathy, can you share those with me?
Yes, to Your Honor, I'll send that to you.
Okay, yeah, if you can, I'd, I'd appreciate that, just so I, you know, I have a better understanding of the constraints and parameters that were established by the board previously. And then I know you had, one of the, in the second table had discussed some trainings, what, what were those trainings that were done, and who was the target audience? Do you know? You don't have to answer, Alicia, I know you're pinch hitting for Mr. Haynes, so if you're not sure, we can, you know, wait until he comes back.
All right, Gwen, do you happen to remember?
So these are trainings that the staff are attending, not that we are putting on for our clients.
So these are trainings that staff actually went out and attended, not, not, okay, all right. Okay. So this is more directed, the second chart for staff activity. The outreach that staffs undertaking, trainings that they've attended, conferences that they've attended.
I, I believe the outreaches are the ones that our offices conducted at different places, and then the trainings are that we've attended.
And what is collaborations?
So those would be when we've been invited to participate in perhaps an outreach or a meeting of some sort where we're providing information, where we're working with another agency.
Okay, all right. Any questions for Alicia, do you have anything else?
Just on the next page, it shows the, the number of cases that we've received at our office under the Advocacy Center program, which is the the ICJR and the stop grant that Mr. Moreno was talking about earlier, so the number of cases we've received per month, seven in October, five in November, sixteen in December. And then on the last column, that it's not five restraining orders per month, it's just how many we've obtained and gone to court for for the fiscal year. And then, we just needed, wanted to further advise that attorney Donna Munya Kanata is now on our EJC Advisory Council. So she can help provide us guidance in that, in that way. Which hopefully will really help us, and then I mean, we're just letting the Chief Justice, Justice know that a couple of the types of cases that were being handled at Public Defender are now being shifted down to our office, so that includes the low-income guardianships and the war claims, so we have a couple cases starting in those areas.
The, you mentioned the advisory, there's a separate advisory board for the I guess it's called the Civil Justice Center now as opposed to the Elder Justice Center. And, and what is the composition of that advisory board?
Well, it's an advisory council, just for the, the Elder Justice Center grant.
Okay.
It, it's not they just gather quarterly to give it, give us advice and guidance on how we should go about meeting our program goals and objectives and so, so, I mean, we do have, Gwen, could you explain the exact membership?
Yeah, so we have Mayor, Mayor Alec. We have the retired Honorable Sokola. And we have Lou Sanchez, Dr. Dolores Lee, and attorney Kat Campbell, those are other members other than the newest member, Ms. Donna Kanata.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you. Any questions, anything else from Alicia? All right, thank you, Alicia.
Thank you.
The next issue under old business is the attorney pay parity.
So this one, okay, the, the last legislature, there was a bill introduced that we're trying to put us on the same level playing ground as the prosecutors. Last year, the Speaker Terlaki got this like eleven o'clock at night amendment that gave prosecutors a fifty percent pay adjustment just for a working prosecution. So obviously, it's a great recruiting tool for them. And we're hoping that, you know, to level that playing field and really balance the skills of justice, so we can get the legislature to to authorize it for our office as well, and, you know, and APD. And so there's a, we've anticipated a bill being introduced, some senator has already indicated that they plan on introducing it. And so we, at this point, it hasn't been introduced, but we've seen a draft, and it's identical to the one that was introduced last year.
And who's sponsoring that, is it Senator San Augustine?
Well, last year was, it's not, it was one of the freshman senators, Senator Kanata.
Roy Kanata, okay.
And I think they're obviously going to reach out to the other senators to get co-sponsors, but we'll, we'll see where that ends up.
Okay. All right. And then item F, the conflict of interest, you indicated that, you know, you'll work on that SOP and distribute it for us to look at the updated version at the next meeting. All right, we, we had nothing on the agenda for new business, but there's a couple of points of information that I will bring up, there's no action that will be required on the new business at this meeting, but the first is a we do have a resolution to thanking trustee Akubi for her service as a board member, this will be her last meeting as a board member, she indicated that she wished to step down after serving for so long on the Public Defender Services Corporation Board. You know, both went for, for six years when she was the Guam Bar President, as well as you know, this most Uh, you know, this most recent term where she, she served for a term of three years, I will be reappointing, um. Donna Kanata, uh, Munya to, uh, Donna Munya Kanata, uh, to serve again another three-year term. And uh, so she will be appointed by me to serve as a, as one of the, my appointees and I. There will be another member who will be appointed to replace a trustee Akubi who will sit at our next meeting. Um, I also would like us to do a resolution, uh, commending other. Prior Chairman, former Chief Justice F. Philip Carbelito, uh, for his work and service to the Board of Trustees, so we'll have both. Um, trustee Akubi and Chairman Carbelito's resolutions available for action. Uh, at the next uh, board meeting, because we, we can't take uh, action on any resolution. Or a, or any action if it wasn't duly published in advance, uh, as an agenda item, so we will do that. Uh, at the next meeting. Um, is there any public discussion or anybody? Any, anything else for the order of business? There being none, um. We are scheduled to have a meeting, I think we'll go ahead and keep the meeting happy. If, if you don't mind, uh, on the twenty-eighth at twelve-thirty, I almost got thrown for a loop, Steve, because you said the meetings were the last Tuesday of the month. To me, and then, of course, January, the first month ends up having one on the thirty-first, that's the last Tuesday, it had five instead of four. Kathy remind, uh, I guess, made it clear, it's the fourth Tuesday, which isn't always the last. So, um, I actually had it in my calendar for the next week, but it, it turned out to be perfect, I, I, I was able to, to. When the PJ wrote me and said, we had a previously scheduled meeting today, I, me and the presiding judge, he wrote me, says, hey, we have a public defender meeting. And both of us, for some reason, we didn't get the uh, the material on Friday, both PJ and I. So hopefully, uh, they'll figure that out and what, what happened, why we didn't get that information, but. Alright, if there's nothing else, can I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Alright, motion by Presiding Judge, second by trustee Kanata, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
You have one more meeting to attend, QB, we're not letting you off that easy, you gotta be back.
Okay, CJ, sounds good, thank you.
Alright.
Make sure it's a nice lunch.
Thanks, everyone. Yep, bye-bye.